Okay, we're live Chair.
Okay, so welcome everybody. Good afternoon. Trust you're all well. And as I mentioned the weather already, I'll mention it again just for the live stream. It's almost sunny but not quite. Okay. Okay, you're very lucky. It's not, it's very cloudy where I am.
All right.
Okay, so going through the, just the agenda now. Any apologies?
I haven't received any Chair.
Okay. Members disclosures of pecuniary or non pecuniary interest, are there any? Councillors? No? Lovely. Minutes of the previous meeting, councillors just for, as we're doing this on Teams, if you're happy with the minutes at some point when the pen is working, I will sign those minutes and send them back to Isabel. Are we all happy with me doing that?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so there was, just for clarity, I'm just going to pull up, there's a couple, there's the purple papers. I'm restricted minutes, wasn't there, from the...
It's a general item thirteen.
That's the one.
It's a pretty short.
Yeah, it was a pretty short one, but I was just trying to come up with the dates and I can't find the dates on my...
Thirteenth, perhaps the thirteenth October.
Okay, so those, those minutes to be signed, as it was so short and sweet. So I will send those over to Isabel later on today if I can get the pen working or at least sometime this week. Okay, so that's the minutes element done. Can we move straight into item two, which is our people's strategy then? Rich, are you leading us on this one or somebody else?
I am today Chair, if that's good. So, thank you very much. Item two then, our people's strategy, this includes an item on agile working and is covered in pages thirteen to eighty-eight of your packs and the agenda. So in terms of our people's strategy firstly, we've refreshed our strategy to align with our council plan for 2020 to 2025. And we've developed the people's strategy with a broad range of stakeholders, including our How We Work Board, our corporate board operating as change portfolio board, within the HR and OD Directorate, our trade union partners, senior leadership forum and our staff networks. And the aim here is to identify a number of priority items that will deliver to address the outcomes that we've defined within the strategy, the enablers that we've defined and a range of high level measures. And this is all designed to help create a great place to work where diverse and talented people are enabled to be their best. We've developed the strategy around our five values and around our six behaviours. And the strategy is founded on six building blocks from which the priority items have been developed. We need to remain agile in terms of delivery of the strategy, not least because of Covid, but also changing service needs and changing staff needs as well. And it's what we're seeking then is approval for ourselves within HR and OD to develop the underpinning strategies and projects that will actually deliver our people's strategy and to refine measures where necessary. So that's the, the crux of our people's strategy. In terms of agile working, our focus here is on creating an environment where work is what we do, rather than where we do it from or indeed how it's done. And our agile working offer is developed very much to provide choice for our people in how they deliver services within the overall needs of Warwickshire County Council and our citizens. It also provides us with opportunities to look at the way in which we manage our office space across the organisation and any changes that we can make in that arena. The approach was taken to Cabinet last week on the tenth of December and was supported. And this is really around enabling our people to be at their very best. There is one small typing error in the report on section one point three where it should read offer rather than officer. So it's a flexible working offer or an agile working offer indeed that we're looking to put in place for our people. That's the general gist of it. I'm conscious of time and the fact that there's, there's a big agenda today. So shall we move to questions perhaps Chair?
Sorry mute. Is the word of the year, isn't it mute? Absolutely. Richard absolutely is right in saying councillors that the the agile working strategy came to Cabinet on Thursday last week and that was approved. We had some varied questions at Cabinet and one of them was around where in terms of staff engagement and really to say that the staff engagement is around being achieved and obtained really through the staff surveys that we've been conducting throughout the year. And I'm sure Rich could probably give us a bit more detail around that piece for you. But that's really what I wanted to say. And are there any questions Neil?
Thank you. It wasn't really a question, but it was picking up on that point. I'd already sort of highlighted that, that I think that that is possibly the most important part of this document. It's, it's our engagement with staff to make sure that we are looking after their needs as well, because it is a total change in working culture. And the, the possibilities of losing people along the way emotionally as well as physically is, is very high. And I think we do need to spend quite a lot of time in making sure that we are doing our best to protect the, the social aspects of working. You know, that, that is very important to, to a lot of people. And if you spend all of your time at home, as a lot of people are finding during the Covid crisis, you actually would miss out on a lot. And I think that we need to try and build in as many ways as possible for people to basically congregate around the coffee machine, but virtually. You know, a lot of, a lot of support to each other is given that way, but also a lot of work it's done. You find out an awful lot there that you don't pick up if you're just working in isolation. And, and I think that, that, I think it's four point four is, is really, really important to, to the future of our staff and making sure that we, we progress and continue to get the best out of everybody.
Thank you for that Neil. Rich, I know you're going to probably want to answer that and come back with some comments, but I've got Andy Jen, so we take them together.
Yes, thank you Chair. I think it is, what I'm going to say is backing up what Neil said, so it's probably wise to take them together. I agree with everything Neil just said, but I also have concerns, not so much, not just about the sort of mental welfare of staff, but physical welfare of staff, because in, there was a time if somebody worked from home, there'd be sort of quite comprehensive checks to make sure they had the right equipment and the right seating. But I, I get this impression that with the current situation, there's been a rush to home working perhaps without that sort of level of sort of health and safety considerations. And I just wonder, you know, has that been taken into account in, you know, to the level that it should be?
Okay, we can pick up on the DSE assessments etcetera. Rich, do you want to come in on those? And then Alison, can I ask you to come in on the provisions in terms of, you know, the equipment provisions and making sure that everyone's got the right equipment etcetera and are healthy and well while they're working at home please?
Yes, will do. Thanks. Thank you.
Lovely. Thanks Chair. I think we're blessed today because we've got Alison on the call and Kate on the call. So we've, we've got two people that have been actively involved in this. So perhaps if I go through some of the detail and then Alison can supplement with, with anything conditional that I've missed. In terms of the surveys then and the approach to engagement, it is critical to us organisationally. And we've run a change, a series of check-in surveys with all of our colleagues throughout the Covid situation. We're now at a position whereby we've just concluded check-in four and the results from that will be available very, very shortly. But alongside that, we've been looking in parallel at what we can do to appropriately support our colleagues. And that goes from anything from ways in which we can engage with people using Teams. So I think it's the, the virtual water cooler that the councillor referred to as a way of actually operating there to actually having online protocols in terms of how we operate, encouraging our colleagues, for example, to take time out of the working day to, to get some sunlight, particularly at this time of year. The way in which work is planned and diaries are managed, not starting the working day too early or finishing too late and taking appropriate breaks periodically throughout the day. Through the surveys we've put in range, in, in place, a range of ways of working to actually keep our people as well as we can. And that focuses on the mental wellbeing that's been referred to by the councillor. In terms of the physical wellbeing, we do have a robust approach in place for DSE assessments. And initially when we moved to working independently, we said that any colleague could access up to a hundred pounds in funding against receipts for any equipment that they needed to purchase in order to operate safely from home. I think it's six, eight weeks ago now, we lifted that cap. So there's now no limit on the funding, providing that it's actually accompanied by a DSE assessment. So we're encouraging all colleagues to undertake DSE assessments to access any equipment that they need to work from home. We've put in place an approach that allows people to come into the office in a Covid secure manner to collect any equipment that they need. So some colleagues have done that in the form of taking larger screens, chairs for example, that they need in order to operate safely. So we're allowing people to either access equipment in a, in an appropriately recorded manner or alternatively to purchase it where it's necessary. But that is accompanied by a display screen equipment assessment. So I hope that, that covers the points, but if there's anything that Alison or Kate need to elaborate on?
Okay. I think, I think Rich has covered most of the, the points there. I suppose it might just be worth mentioning. We have put provisions in place for people to actually access a desk within the workplace if they're really struggling in working from home. Now, obviously we manage that quite carefully to make sure that it's done in a controlled way. But if people are putting forward requests, then we can, we can have an approval process whereby we can actually allocate them the desk as well. With regards to the equipment, in the longer term, we're actually revising what the basic kit is now needed for an individual that, that works for Warwickshire. So originally you would be handed a Surface Pro when you join the organisation. We're now looking to, to review actually what, what else is needed in addition to that Surface Pro so that the basic landing kit that you give a new employee will be able to accommodate their needs better. So that there's quite a bit that, that we were continuing to look and adapt as, as we go through this change process.
Okay. John, do you want to come in? And then Neil, I'll come back and pick up. I think you've got a follow up.
Yeah, thanks very much. There was also the issue of actually running costs and whether we're advising people to claim this HMRC tax break or tax allowance for having your own home office. Because, you know, having a, working from home does mean that you have to take heating on all the time. You can't have the sort of the, you know, the, the sort of the cooling down period in the middle of the day, which when you're out at the office usually happens. So heating costs will have gone up. And of course, there's all the other stuff as well. So it's, the capital cost is great. I'm pleased that you're actually getting people to do a proper health assessment of their workplace, because I can see it causing a lot of back problems if they don't. Certainly been the experience that private companies have had during the first Covid lockdown. But certainly the tax implications and also running costs are worth considering. Thank you.
Okay Neil, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just very quickly, it was to just say how encouraged I am. We discussed this in previous meetings and it's, it's really encouraging to see how much has been done since we've sort of first started and how many of the things we discussed, you've pushed forward and I'm really grateful for that because it's, I'm sure has made a big difference to a lot of people. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that Neil. I have to say Covid's accelerated a lot of this programme forward because it's literally forced us to do some of the things that we were thinking of doing anyway. But in terms of John's question, I don't know if it's going to be Rich or Alison who's going to be answering. Rich has got his hand up, so I'm assuming Rich is coming in to answer your question, John.
Yes, if I, if I can come back on that point councillor. Initially, we considered this point at the outset of Covid and then we reconsidered our position a couple of months ago. As councillor Horner has indicated, there is a provision for employers to make an allowance payment to employees in the sum of up to six pounds per week on a tax-free basis. Or alternatively, if the employer chooses not to make that payment, the individual can claim tax relief on that amount themselves. Having considered the position on two occasions, we've decided not to proceed with the allowance payment but to make our colleagues aware of the ability to claim the tax relief, which is quite a simple process. And many of our colleagues have actually chosen to follow that line. As Alison said, in addition to that, obviously we are making desks available currently in a Covid secure way. But going forward post-Covid, those desks will still be available for colleagues who do want to come into the workplace because they feel that either for their personal wellbeing or because winter fuel costs are prohibitive that they need to do so. So those are, those are the arrangements that we've put in place.
Okay. Brilliant. Thank you for that Rich. Andy, I'm hoping that's answered your question as well and given you some reassurance that a key point about this whole agenda is that it remains flexible and fluent and fluid really, so that, you know, it's a work in progress, it can be changed continuously as our, our situation and as our work situation evolves and changes as well. So it's a very much a work in progress document. That's how I see it anyway. So the recommendations are one, two and three on page thirteen of the, of item two. Are we all in agreement with those recommendations rather than me saying, reading them all out? Can I just have a hands either showing or hands up? That would be great. Yep. So that's unanimous. Thank you very much councillors. Thank you Rich officers. I know it's, it's, you know, it, you've had to put a lot of work in to get this document together and we really appreciate it. So thank you for all your hard work in getting it all together and getting it to us as it's very much been changing and evolving all the time. So many thanks from me and I'm sure the other councillors on this also are, will be on the same page. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Moving on then to item three, which is proposals for mileage rates. I'm looking down the list to see who, which officers are. Here she is, Kate. You popped up just in time.
Thanks very much. So I'll take it the papers have been read, but just give a brief introduction. So the paper proposes an increase in the county council's mileage rate from forty P to forty five P and links very much to the agile working offer that we've just been talking about. The council's mileage rate has not been updated since two thousand and nine. And during this time, the HR, HMRC rate has increased its tax approved rate to forty five P. And therefore for many years, the council has been out of line with the HR, HMRC rate. With a more agile working workforce in the future, it's anticipated that the amount of mileage that will be claimed will be reduced. And in order for the proposal to be cost neutral as, as recommended, and we'll need to see an eleven percent reduction in mileage and we're currently seeing around sixty four percent reduction in mileage. But understand that that will change which we go back to business as usual. So therefore it appears to be the right time to bring the county council's mileage allowance in line with the HMRC rate of forty five P and that any future changes to the HMRC rate will automatically be applied going forward. Further consultation with schools will need to be undertaken before moving forward with the increased mileage rate which applies to the school-based staff. So is there any questions before we move on to the recommendations?
This is pretty straightforward team really. Why wouldn't we, you know, because we haven't looked at this since two thousand and nine. So I think we need to bring it online and show that we're willing. And I think you've got an easy one here Kate. I think no one's got no questions for you. So all in agreement.
I wish I'd been claiming it for the last four years. Since we changed the system, I haven't made, got it to work.
Oh God. I'm sure someone in HR would have helped you Neil. Okay, so can I, the recommendations are set out on page eighty-nine, agenda item three of the report. Can I ask that everyone that's here councillor, show your hands for approval? That would be great. Or the function, I should be voting as well and I keep forgetting. There we go. Lovely. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you Kate.
You, bye.
Okay, moving on to item four, which is on page ninety-five. And I'm just looking to see which officer is going to come and talk to us about this one. Do we have an officer available for this one? Ah Neil, here you are.
Cyber Policy Chair.
That, that's the one. Cyber security policy.
Yep. Good afternoon everybody. Brief paper on the policy that we're looking to introduce. The Pension Regulator requires all pension schemes to have a cyber policy in place to protect the integrity of members' records and of course pension fund assets. And we should also keep this policy under review. The Pension Regulator specifically advises local authority pension funds that they cannot simply rely on their host authorities' policy and practices and must have something bespoke. Having said this, we will be calling on the expertise of the county's risk and compliance officer who are expected to be appointed in the new year for their assistance. And we're also likely to assess whether we need some expertise from external organisations to help us with this. The actual policy is at appendix one and the action plan is at appendix two. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, again, it's a pretty straightforward paper councillor. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, again, it's not a question. It's, it's an observation. We had a meeting this morning of the investment subcommittee. We had representatives from a lot of different other organisations. And one of the problems is And one of the problems is that trying to actually organise those is quite difficult because of all the firewalls that that are involved with all the different organisations. So it really is essential that we have this policy and make sure that we can work externally. You know, it's, it would be so easy to put something in place which excludes everybody else and makes it a sort of in-house thing. And the difficulty, as I'm sure Neil will, will agree with me, is actually getting it so that it works properly externally as well.
That's right, Neil. It's going hand in hand with our partners really, you know, for administration systems, for portals that they will have in place, all these type of things to make sure that they're compliant and that we can deal with them. I mean, I think the Covid has again brought this to the fore and it's helped us in, well, it's brought this to the fore and we need to address this very quickly, but we need expertise, expertise to help us do this.
Yeah, okay. Bill, did you want to come in? Are you okay?
I think, I think I'm okay. It is, it is vital that it's done and we saw today that Google had a, you know, had a glitch. And we're fully aware of the real dangers and saying, if something went wrong. And then someone who got certain informations, how to get into a GP's practice and all the codes and everything. These things do happen if people aren't careful. So it's vital that we do it and I'm very pleased to see that Neil's got it in hand.
Brilliant. Thank you. Thank you for that, councillors. So the recommendation is on page 95 of the report, item four. Can we just use our voting but hands to agree that we approve the recommendations as I set out, please? Can't see John. John, where have you gone? Ah, there you are. Nice to see you.
My hand up.
Lovely. Okay, so that's unanimous. Lovely. I couldn't see you. So if you had put your hand up, I wouldn't have been able to see you.
No, I didn't. I put my hand up electronically.
Well, you can stay on where I can see you'll be good.
Actually, well, if you go in, if you put, if you put up participants, you, the hands appear at the top of the, top of the list.
I know, I've got them all up.
Keep an eye on everybody.
Yeah, I do. I like to keep an eye that you're concentrating, John.
Oh, right. Oh, well, no, I don't. It means I can't drink coffee and sort of do have
Exactly.
less than, less than perfect manners and that sort of thing.
Absolutely. That's why I like to see what you're up to.
Or should I rebel and turn my video off?
Absolutely not. We're being recorded. Okay, moving on to item five, the Local Government Pension Scheme, Amendment Number Two, Regulations 2020. Neil, I think this is you again, isn't it?
It's me again, yes. This is some amending regulations that were issued back in September. They're concerning greater flexibilities about the exiting of employers from the pension fund and also the ability for the fund to revisit employer contribution rates between valuations. And exiting employers where an employer leaves the fund, for example, they no longer have any active members. And what the regulations enable us to do, they reinforce a practice that many funds already have in place of spreading the exit payment for unfunded liabilities over a period of time, for example, a number of years, depending on the amount. Or also for an employer to become a deferred employer, which would mean that they carry on contributing to the fund even though they have no, no longer have any active members. For the revisiting of employer contributions, this is more about if there's a change, for example, in an employer's covenant, financial covenant. Or one thing that sprang to my mind, for example, would be if an employer is having difficulties through Covid, they could approach the fund and say, you know, is there a way that we can revisit the employer's contribution rate that they're paying? So this gives the fund the ability to assist this employer through what could be a difficult period of time. At the moment, we're waiting for some statutory guidance from the government about how to implement this. We've had some guidance from the Scheme Advisory Board in the last week or two for comments, which is in draft. Once this has all been assessed, we will amend the Funding Strategy Statement and the Admissions and Termination Policy. And we'll bring those back in March, hopefully.
Okay. Any comments, observations, councillors on this report? Because it's really to an information report really, isn't it, Neil?
Yeah, it is, Chair, yeah.
No. Okay, in which case can we move the recommendations as I set out, please, on page 105? Okay, that's unanimous. Just Andy, waiting for you to. That's lovely. Okay, lovely. That's approved. Moving on. Thank you for that. Thank you, Neil. And to you too, Neil. So the next item is Fire Pensions, McLeod, Age Discrimination, Remedy and Immediate Detriment Guidance. So this is Vicky that's going to be taking this or leading, talking us through this report.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So this report, the recommendation is to note and comment. So basically, the Home Office have released a guidance document for fire authorities to decide whether to follow. For those members of the fire schemes who, had they not transferred into this care scheme from the 1st of April 15, would have been able to retire from their final salary scheme and take benefits. The instruction from the Home Office is to calculate benefits based on their legacy schemes. So in effect, ignore the fact that they moved across to care and calculate the benefits so that they're in, they're not detrimentally affected by having to wait for the change in regulations from the 1st of April 22. We have, from the report, you'll see that we have sought legal advice from both WCC and the Scheme Advisory Board have also issued legal advice on this option. WCC have decided that the course of action that we will take is to follow the guidance where we can for individuals, setting out clear instruction for the members to say what we've done and why we've done it. If there's a particular case that we can't use the guidance for because of complexities where we're still waiting on guidance to come through, we will explain that to the member also and tell them why we've made that decision. So if there's any questions on this report, please ask.
Okay, over to you, councillors. Neil.
Thank you. I think it's essential that we move on this as soon as possible. It's whatever the end result of this, it represents a huge amount of, of work for our pensions department. And I think one of the things that we need to, to really underline on this is the staffing implications, you know, the, the staff that we've got must be supplemented with extra staff. And to aid that, we need to pass this, this recommendation to note it and to comment on it, but actually make recommendations that we do support the department to get this done. We do have a very tight deadline to, to, to get through with all the assessments and the notifications that have to be, be done for these people. And I hope that we can give them as much support as they need.
Thank you. Vicky, is it true that we are getting the extra support in on this?
And resource wise, we haven't got additional staff coming in to help with these cases. We have actually, within the Pensions Administration team, had a bit of a rejig so that we have more members of staff that are able to cope with fire queries and they're coping with that at the minute. And the number of cases that we've identified that we potentially could apply this rule to is about 27. So we're not talking huge numbers because our fire membership isn't, isn't massive. But we do realise that obviously that is additional work that could come away. The other impact is obviously on the fire service itself, that we don't have a massive stampede of, of members that had delayed their retirement because the change to the scheme now, obviously having that open so that they could decide to retire now. So, so we're working with the fire service to manage it.
Okay, so, so what I'm getting from you, Vicky, is that you can manage it at this moment in time. I just want to pick up on councillor Dervic's concerns, that's all. So
Yeah, so, yeah, so at the minute with this particular document, we're just looking at cases that are affected by the immediate detriments guidance. So there's only a certain number of members that are in scope for this particular advice. But the actual McLeod impact on the whole membership, we are, we've got a project that's running alongside and we have got additional resources in the scope of that for dealing with that for fire.
Thank you. That's brilliant. Bill, did you want to come in?
Just a quick question, Vicky. Roughly, how many days per person would you expect? You've got 27 people. Is it stage that it would need to look, to look at the detail or less or more?
So there's different elements that are included in calculating the benefits. So there's going to be some time spent by payroll to collect the data that we need to calculate the benefits. So there's a bit of time spent on payroll. But on the pension side, we've managed to work out a system where we can actually use the system to do the calculation of the benefits for us. So we've cut down the amount of manual time we need to make this calculation. So for each case, we're probably looking at about half a day from the Pensions Administration side to get that right. And then you're probably looking at another half a day for payroll to get all the payroll information in.
Okay. John, did you want to come in?
Yeah, thanks very much. It was just really to say that from my understanding is that this almost is a guinea pig for the rest of the LGPS, the rest of the the government pension or the local government pension funds. So in fact, it won't just be the fire service in cut in about a year's time. Everybody in the local government pension scheme will have this two option availability. And it will cause enormous work for pension funds. And it's not, you know, so we won't just be hiring in a few people for a short time. This is ongoing, certainly until the batch that we're in post in 2014 have moved through the system. So that's just a heads up, really.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
That was the point of my question, really.
Yeah. So this, this, this actual guidance that we've received now that we're, we're to follow, we're following is just one element of the McLeod work that we're going to do. So we've got a separate project that is going to manage the work we're going to need to do for LG and for fire. And there's resource and including that additional resources that we will need that's included in that, in that sort of project management.
Okay, brilliant. Thank you for that, Vicky. As there's no further questions, the recommendation is to note and comment on the report, which I think we've done. So that's on page 109 of the Pension Committee Report. Can I have a show of hands, please electronically? Oh, I know we're all in agreement. Lovely. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, councillors. Moving on. Okay, so the next item is item seven, which is assessing employer covenant in the pension fund. And here he is, Chris, is talking on this report.
Thanks. So very briefly, this report is to do with the fund proactively looking at risks around employer financial viability and therefore employer contributions to the pension fund. We already have policies and arrangements in place to deal with these risks. So we've already got the Funding Strategy Statement, which sets out how we deal with employer contributions in a way that has regard to their level of risk and so on. We've got a ministry, we've got a admin strategy which sets out roles and responsibilities between the fund and employers. So that's all covered. But this is looking at it again and looking at it proactively because of Covid and the kind of risks that that, that presents in particular. These actions will allow us to take a kind of risk assessed or risk-based approach to individual employers where necessary. And it also will dovetail with what Neil mentioned earlier on about some changes in the regulations. The fact that, for example, we can review contribution rates between valuations. One thing to say about this approach is we intend for this approach to help to solve problems where they exist and not to cause problems. So for example, if you had an approach which, for example, said, you know, we're happy to reduce employer contributions across a piece. You know, that might be intended to help solve a problem, but it might cause one by just inviting, you know, the kind of thing you're trying to prevent in the first place. So we're aiming to be helpful but not cause a problem inadvertently. In the appendix, in section seven, there's some specific next steps and really these are in three chunks. One is reviewing the contracts or admission agreements, as we call them, that we have with employers to make sure that they're all in place, fit for purpose. Another is a kind of risk-based set of actions where we pick, pick out employers that are at particular risk and look at those in particular. And the third is reviewing security, where we've got security in place. So with those three prongs in place and bearing in mind that we've already got the Funding Strategy Statement and the admin strategy behind this, this ought to provide a way of looking helpfully at employers and trying to do something helpful where it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Andy, oh, we have a question from Bill. Sorry, I didn't see your hand there, Bill. You're quick at the draw. You're on mute. You're on mute, Bill.
It was there for the voting. Sorry, I didn't take it down.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Well, I mean, no, I'm, the only question I possibly had was I'm assuming, Chris, that we are in fairly constant conversation with employer, employers who are possibly at risk?
Yes. And if you look at the traffic that we've got at the moment in terms of employer issues and dialogue, that level of activity is not significantly different, not noticeably different to what it would be at an underlying level. So we have some employers where we've got some challenging conversations as you'd expect, but nothing out of the ordinary. And if you look at the credit control monitoring of employer contributions, we've got some that are a bit behind and we report them, by the way, in the reaches register where appropriate. But that activity is the same level as it has been underlying. So right now, although Covid has happened and continues to happen, there's nothing systematic expressing itself in the activity we've got with employers or the contributions we're receiving.
Okay, brilliant. Thank you for that, Chris. As there's no further questions, can I ask councillor to vote or show your hands, please electronically? Brilliant. That's unanimous. Thank you, Chris.
To me again for the next one.
I'm just trying to put my hand down. Okay, going, moving on to item eight then, which is the schedule of pension fund policies. Over to you, Chris.
Okay, so this report basically intends to raise the profile of all of the fund policies and we're setting out a schedule for their review. So this report has gone also to the Investment Subcommittee and the Local Pension Board. It covers investment-related policies, administration-related stuff and also governance. And some policies kind of straddle, you know, more than, more than one or all three of those, of these things. The aim of the schedule is to keep all these policies up to date and fit for purpose. We had a governance review, you recall, a year or so ago. And some of the actions that came up from that were to review some policies. And the aim of this is to make sure that we keep these policies, kind of the profile of them up. We don't let any of them rot and become fit for purpose in the background. One other thing I would say about this is we've increased the capacity that we've got in the teams to support the pension fund. So as you know, we've got more capacity in the admin team, a bit more in the investments team, more to look at governance. And to some degree, that extra capacity and expertise is helping us to deliver more work. But what it's also doing is opening our eyes to how much stuff there is to do. Therefore, it remains to be seen whether we've got enough capacity to keep up with all of this or whether we need to do something else different from here. I wouldn't want to be complacent and just assume that what we've got in place right now will be enough forever. So if you take, for example, the cybersecurity policy we spoke about earlier, that will require quite a lot of effort from support from IT and also from pension fund officers working on a team effort. If you take the employer covenant work that we just talked about, that will be additional. And we need to make sure that we're careful that we can resource it properly. What we don't want to do is spend the next year or two working really hard, trying really hard, but not making it. And then having difficulties, you know, where our policies are out of date or we haven't delivered certain things. We've got to keep looking at our capacity, looking forward to being proactive if we need more capacity.
Absolutely agree with that, Chris. Any comments, councillors?
No, it's very, very good to see it's been done.
Yeah, good housekeeping, I would say. Very good housekeeping. Okay, so the recommendation is set out on page 119 of the report. Staff and pensions committee are asked to review and comment on the attached schedule of pension fund policies. And I think we are all in agreement with it. May we have a show of hands electronically, please? I have a sticky hand today. Okay, that's gone through unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Okay, moving on to item nine, which is the pension administration preparations for MacLeod. Ah, and it's Liz.
Thank you, Chair.
Got you all today, haven't we?
Yes, full house.
Full house.
And so you've already heard from Vicky about the implications of MacLeod on the immediate detriment issue for fire. And this report, because this is, as councillors have already referenced, because this is such a significant project, we wanted to just bring an update to you and give you some assurance about how that project is being managed. We've briefed the committee previously on MacLeod and particularly about the government consultations that took place earlier in the year. And that consultation was about how they're proposing to remedy the discrimination issues following various legal challenges. MacLeod and Sargent being the the two main ones. We haven't had confirmation from the government yet about what the final details will be and how the how things will change to to implement that. Although we we understand that government departments are being encouraged to to give us more information early in the new year. But nevertheless, this is such a big task that we do need to start preparing for it. And both for the local government pension scheme and the fire pension scheme. So LGPS and the fire schemes do require us to do things slightly differently. But the fire schemes, the proposal that went out to consultation was either that members make an immediate choice about which scheme they want to choose that gives them least detriment or, you know, the best benefits. And they, the options there in the consultation were either to make an immediate choice or to defer that choice to the point that they retire. And we don't know yet which which of those two options government will will go for. And LGPS is slightly different. The proposal is is that members will be under, will be protected by an underpin. And the task in terms of this project is basically that we have to review all of our scheme memberships. So we're talking over 50,000 members just to see who's in scope. And then broadly, we think that probably 25 to 30% of our members will will be affected by this, will be in scope. So that's about give or take 15,000, we think. That's not to say that all of them will have differences to their benefits, but but we will have to review the benefits of. We we think about 15,000 members. So that's going to be a significant call on resources in payroll and pensions team. And of course, that affects all of our 190 employers, not just the county councillors as an employer. The majority of the cost of that, because the majority of that membership sits in the LGPS, the majority of the cost will fall to the pensions fund. There is a small cost relating to fire pensions, but we've already secured some resource to to deal with the extra resource that we would need to deal with that side of things. And we've had a business case approved for the project and we are going through a procurement process to secure external technical project management and to help us with this, because we do need to make sure we're getting it right for our members. And we're now putting in place the the governance arrangements that will allow us to kick off this project and start collecting all of the member data from January next year. And that's that's the overview of the work that we're doing to get the project in place, but happy to take any questions.
Okay, I think Neil's got his hand up first, Liz, for you.
Yeah, it was just to comment that this is where I underlined additional staffing and put my comments about the fact that we really do need to support the the department in in this bid. And that we will need to review it, I think, in as we go forwards. And I really keep an eye on on whether they have been given enough resources because it's it has such major implications for everybody.
So I think, as Liz has Liz has mentioned, it's the business case has gone through to corporate board and that's been approved. So, you know, we and it's also got, we're going through the procurement process as well. So hopefully, the team will get that support that it will, well.
Hopefully, hopefully.
We've got the right people in place in order to do it.
They've asked for, but I think we still need to keep an eye on it to to check that it is progressing as they wish, as they would want it to.
Liz, do you want to come in on that?
Just to say that, yes, that's right. So we've we've made estimates of the additional staffing resource that would be needed, both in payroll and pensions within the county council. Based on our best our best estimates at this stage of the number of members that we will need to review. But until we've actually collected that data, we won't know those figures for sure. So so yes, completely agree. We need to make sure that once we've got that information, we can take stock of whether we've got the right the right amount of resource allocated to it.
Okay, thank you for that. Bill, did you want to come in?
Yes, I mean, I asked the question about the fire service pensions and how many, you know, how much work would be involved. They were just talking about twenty, talking then about just 27 staff members. And we're told about a day each effectively. Yeah, 15,000, but it's more on the John Horner type of level of work. I mean, it's a tremendous amount, 15,000 days work of, if that's what it is, is a is a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot. Liz, did you want to make any comments on that?
Based on how much time we think it will take to review all of the various individual cases, we think that we're probably looking at needing in the region of seven and a half additional full time equivalents in pensions for a 12 month period. And nearly four additional people in in on the HR and payroll side. Okay, as I say, the intention is that that would be that would be funded from from the pensions fund for the majority of that because fire is only a small proportion of that. Just 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 to reiterate what what Vicky had said, the the work to look at the immediate detriment for those fire cases, that that's only a very small handful of people. So that's that's the bit that we could absorb within the team, that this extra resource is to deal with that, that bigger review of who's in scope and then the review of their benefits.
Yeah. Okay, hopefully that gives you some assurance, councillors, that the extra resource is coming in and it has been approved by corporate board. Okay, so the recommendation is to note and comment on the report, which is on page 123. And can we have a show of hands, please electronically? Yeah, so that's all unanimous. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next report, which is administration activity and performance update. And I am looking to Vicky.
Sorry, that was bad timing. If he doesn't cough again, I'm sorry. And so, yeah, so the recommendation is just for the the committee to note this report. Looking at the activities that the pension administration team have undertaken since the last meeting. And I won't run through each point, but you can see that hopefully good progress is being made in the team. And the governance action plan is almost completed with two of the points on there. The cybersecurity policy has obviously just been agreed. And the other project that we're working on, that the implementation of iConnect is still progressing very well. We've now had our first phase one go live and and submission has happened for on the report, we'd noted 17 employers, but actually on the 30th of November, we'd had 28 employers go live with their iConnect submission. So phase one employers all went live by the agreed time scales. And the other success story of this so far is that the WCC payrolls have become phase two. We'd originally put them in as a phase four, but because they've made such good progress on their iConnect extract work, we're looking at those going live. And I think we've got 29 of the 30 payrolls going live in December with the biggest one, the WCC payroll going live in January. So some still some matching up exercise work going on there, but that's all progressing really well. And so we're now communicating with phase three employers to make sure that they're able to get their extracts ready and and ready for a submission in February and March. And so that work is underway and then phase four employers are obviously being contacted as well to make sure that they're doing the work they need to do and to to bring those on board. So iConnect, the iConnect project is, you know, a really good success story at the minute. I won't tempt fate with the phase three and four. But but WCC holding most of our membership, you know, with those going live next month. You know, we've done really well to get that to that to to go through. And both pensions and payroll have worked together really well on that. And the other areas of work they've been working on, obviously, the the GMP reconciliation work is still underway. And we're hopefully hopefully going to complete that by the 31st of January. And so the deadline on there says 2020, but obviously that should say 21. And key performance indicators just showing us how we're how we're getting through with our our workloads. And some, we can see where there's been some effects where members of staff have been off. And our numbers have come down, which we we wouldn't want. So we're looking at just changing our processes to cover where someone goes off unexpectedly. For the workloads, we've actually completed 32,000 tasks since the first of March. And on average, we're looking at completing 2,774 tasks per month. And we are in a in a state where we're almost level two or completing more than what's than what's coming in. So we're still working on those backlogs coming down. We've also obviously had a lot of new staff coming in since March. So the training and that's been happening has meant that the workload that they're getting through now is increasing because they're they're more trained in in what they're doing. Breaches, we've updated the breaches process on the on the website so that you'll see that then it's now showing the the rag rating for our employers and more work's been done on there to make it a bit clearer. And there was a question raised on whether we should be reporting ourselves for the gone aways that don't receive annual benefit statements. And TPR have confirmed that if we are taking appropriate steps to try and trace those members, that we should record that as a breach, but not necessarily need to report it to them. And so as long as we're taking necessary steps to address that, they're happy that we're doing as much as we can to to trace those people. And and it's the item 10, we're actually doing a tracing service at the minute, working with a tracing company to locate those gone away members. The internal dispute resolution procedure is just currently being updated and is with legal. And that should be ready for the next meeting to to sign off. And the last update is just to say that we're we're appointing a new chair for the the fire pensions board as Keith Bray stepped down and we've got a replacement for Keith. So we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. I have to say, this is a really good news report, isn't it? There's so much that's been done and members will know that we've got Mr. Ro- Rohorn being approved at council tomorrow, tomorrow, next week, tomorrow. I'm going to switch off and let you guys speak for a minute while I have a coughing fit. Any questions, councillors?
Yeah, I was just going to say that whether the decision on the chair of the Fire and Rescue Pension Fund is entirely down to council, I don't think we can make it, we can prejudge their decision.
Do you want me to come in, Chair?
Yes, please, while I have a coughing fit.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, councillor Horner, that's a decision to be made by full council tomorrow.
Am I ever wrong?
Yes, you will.
I think only in a matter of opinion.
And in which case.
We can still recommend it.
The recommendation will be there tomorrow for councillors to approve. But moving on, moving to the recommendation here today, which is on page 129. May we have an electronic show of hands, please? Brilliant. Thank you. That's unanimous. Lovely. Moving on then to item 11, which is briefing note for 95k exit cap regulation change. I'm not sure who's going to come in to talk about that, but we did actually have a briefing note come through. I don't know if all councillors got that.
Did you?
Chair, I've got the briefing note on my computer if councillors like to share the screen. But I think Andrew Felton and the finance officers will be answering any questions on the note.
Okay.
Chair, if I can come in, happy to answer any questions. Obviously, you had quite a long agenda, so we circulated the briefing. There is a very short covering report within the papers as well. So either myself or Andy are happy to take any questions. But in in a nutshell, it's it's an update as to the current position and not a lot has changed since the last meeting in that sense.
Okay. Are there any questions, councillors, or are you all quite happy?
Just to say that I think this is another one of those ones where we really don't have much choice as to whether we accept it or not. It's something that is going to happen and that we need to to agree to it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's right, councillors, the cap is already in force now. The discussion point at the moment is how the two sets of regulations work together and what the more technical formula will be for working out people's entitlement in the event of an exit situation where the cap is exceeded by virtue of the redundancy payment along with the pension actuarial strain.
And I think Liz and Vicky will put me right if I get this wrong, but I think we're adopting some of the the early advice that's coming out about how the financial, the pension regs are going to change. And so we're trying to put that in place as of the first, fourth of December anyway, so that we look like we're heading in the right direction with any employers.
Okay, Vicky, do you want to add anything to that or are you happy?
No, that's right. Just to say that we are following suggested proposals from the Local Government Association, Scheme Advisory Board as to how we pay benefits to members currently where our regulations conflict with the the exit cap regulations.
Okay, brilliant.
Yeah, I understood that the regulations actually came into force at the beginning of November anyway. So, you know, it is all about how we we apply those, but we haven't had full advice yet from government. So as I say, it's something we've got to got to go with.
Yep, yep, I think you're right, Neil. There's not much choice in this. It's it's a case of having to do it and working our way through on how we deliver it as well.
I think this was more about just creating the the risk awareness, because obviously when you've got two sets of legislation that are in conflict with each other, they there is a risk there for us, but we're we're trying to navigate our way through that as best we can to minimise that risk effectively.
Yeah.
It's the assurance that we're trying to give, I suppose.
Okay, there's nothing to really approve there, is there, Sarah? That was just a briefing really for noting. That was just a briefing really for noting.
It is a briefing and noting, Chair, that's right.
Yeah, so, okay, I'm going to now move to exempt item, I think, which is 12. Is that right? Can you stop? Yep.